Welcome to the October 19th, 2015 Fisher's City Hall Meeting. I think we are missing some council people, so why don't we make note of the council people who are missing, just for attendance purposes. I think we have Rich Hall, who's not present, and then Eric Muller. The rest of us are present. We'll go ahead and get started. We have some announcements. Stuart, you want to take the first one for me?
Sure, we'd like to discuss upcoming 116th Street Road Closure. The 116th Street at the railroad crossing will be closed on the evening of October 21st, and will remain closed through the weekend. The project coordinated with Hamilton Southeastern Schools to minimize the impact on bus routes includes the rehabilitation of the railroad crossing and crosswalk improvements in that area. A general detour map is available on the website, and residents attending Boo Bash are encouraged to visit the website to follow the posted detour routes during the closure. Fisher's Police Department will have additional traffic patrols during the AM and PM peak traffic areas, and traffic engineers will manually operate signals to optimize and maintain traffic flow during that time.
Thank you, Stuart. Todd, you want to take the second one for me?
Yes. Fisher's recognized as 2015 IACT Green Community of the Year. This award recognizes the city's commitment to planning for future sustainability with the environment in mind. 2015 application detailed the city of Fisher's plans for high-efficiency HVAC replacements and installations, a pesticide management policy promoting eco-friendly practices, real-time modernization of traffic signals, a rain barrel program, a no-idle policy for city fleet vehicles, and a sustainable growth plans for our trail system, just to name a few of the specific considerations being taken. The city also looks forward to their annual Fall Recycling Day, scheduled to take place on Halloween.
Thanks, Todd. So, you want to take the Boo Bash?
Boo Bash returns this Friday. Join Fisher's Parks and Recreation and 60 local businesses and community organizations this Friday during Boo Bash. Taking place from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., the event offers live children's entertainment, safe trick-or-treating, and the chance to compete in a costume contest. Visit www.fishers.in.us/boo-bash for details about participating vendors entering the costume contest and for a schedule of events.
Thank you. And Selena, you want to take the Boo and Brew, so we show you do something for the adults as well?
Boo and Brew is a brand-new, adult-only event in the Nickel Plate District. Adults are invited to watch the Rocky Horror Picture Show on the big screen Friday, October 30th, beginning at 7:00 p.m., followed by a live concert featuring the Graveyard Stompers, beginning at 9:00 p.m. Sun King Brewery will host a beer garden, and food trucks will be on-site. Wear your costumes and snap a picture for your chance to win. Tag your pictures with hashtag #fishersbmb to win exclusive Sun King items.
Thank you. And David, you want to take the Recycling Day for us?
Sure. Fisher's Department of Public Works Storm Auto Utility invites the public out for the Fall Recycling Day on Saturday, October 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This popular event returns to a new location at Billerica Park and offers residents the opportunity to dispose of unwanted materials and help keep the community vibrant. This year, Keep Fisher's beautiful staff members will be on-site distributing free flower bulbs that can be planted anywhere in the community. To learn more, go to fishers.in.us/recycleday.
Thank you, David. And John, why don't you take the last one?
Sure. Help Fisher's Parks and Recreation thanks our veterans. Beginning on Monday, November 2nd, residents are invited to team up with Fisher's Parks and Recreation to thank a veteran. Card drop boxes will be available here at City Hall and at the Fisher's Park and Recreation Office. For residents interested in making a thank-you card or donating an item for the Richard L. Rata Bush VAMC in Indianapolis. Residents interested in good crafting are invited to Fisher's Library anytime November 2nd through November 6th to create their own card. Additional details can be found at www.fishers.in.us/veteransday.
Thank you, John. There's no no or announcements. We do have a number of presentations. I'm going to go ahead and move the sports presentation to after the Police Department's swearing-in ceremony, so Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Recently, the Fisher's Police Department hired two new officers. It's my privilege to introduce them this evening. First is Eric Freeman. He's 28-years-old, currently lives in Hamilton County with his girlfriend Liz. He graduated from Ball State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and before us, he was an Indiana State Trooper since March of 2011. The other officer is Michael Burke. He's 32-years-old, also lives in Hamilton County with his wife and two children. He graduated from Fairmont State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He was an officer for seven years in Charleston, South Carolina, before moving to Indiana. He was with IMPD for a year, and now he's obviously with us. So, I will turn it over to our Chief. He will come in and swear to office. Thank you, John. Place feet, please. Raise your right hand. Repeat your name.
My favorite friend.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And comply with the Constitution of the United States of America?
And comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Indiana?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Indiana.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Fisher's, Indiana?
The laws and ordinances of the city of Fisher's, Indiana.
Rules and regulations of the Fisher's Police Department?
The rules and regulations of the Fisher's Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics?
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As a police officer, to the best of my ability.
As a police officer, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome aboard.
Looks like a couple of good ones to add to the force, so we appreciate that. Moving on, we'll go ahead and move on to the Sports Annual Update. There's Linda. I didn't see you back there, Linda. Okay?
Can you guys, the mic on? Can you hear me back?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now? Okay. I wanted to thank you for letting us do this. We try and do this probably once every year. Sometimes it goes on to a year and a half to two years, but basically it just gives us an opportunity to let you know what sports is and what we do in the community. And I know there's some newer people on here today, so I kind of wanted to introduce myself. I think I know most of you, but in case you don't, my name's Linda Carlino, and I'm the Executive Director, and it's going on 16 years now, so it's been a while. And I did bring with us, we've got right back here, if you guys can just kind of raise your hands, we have quite a few board members right now. We have a board of 20 people who actually run sports, and those are representatives from all of the leagues, as well as at-large members who actually run for an office. And actually, we have some of our staff. We have eight part-time members of our staff right now, so everything that's done is done by the Board of Directors, as well as the sports staff. And like I said, there's eight part-time employees with staff, ranging from myself, the Executive Director, we have customer service, we have bookkeepers and things like that. And the way that we're paid, because people always wonder that, if we're a part of the city or if we're a part of the schools, we are our own 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. And the way we get our money is through every child that registers, a portion of that comes to the sports office. And so that pays basically for our operations. So that pays for salaries, it pays for our lease, that we lease our building from the city, and it pays for all sorts of things like that. And then we also do have sponsors, and we do have some events that we do, and that's to help with some other events that we do. We provide scholarships to all the kids who cannot afford to pay, so if they're on the free or the reduced lunch, then we will pay for them to be able to play. We have a large hearing impaired community in Fisher's. We provide interpreters for all of the kids who need that for all their practices and games. And then we also do background checks for all of our coaches, and we are now doing concussion training and all sorts of other things to make sure that the kids are as safe as they can be in the community. So, I'm trying to do this, I know that you guys have a huge agenda today, so you should have gotten some information from us, and one of the first things that we had basically were, and I'm not really sure how to, I just put that up there while it show?
Yep.
Sure, come on.
There we go. This basically just goes through this list. What we did is we put this together, and it kind of just shows our growth patterns over the years. And you can see, some of our leagues are actually even new. So, in 1998, there were only a few sports, but as you keep going down, you'll see it gets bigger and bigger. And like I said, you've got all of this. All of our leagues continue to grow. That's the first ones that we have, the ones that you're probably most familiar with, your baseball, softball, football, and cheerleading. Then we go on to soccer, where we do soccer in the fall and the spring. Then we started adding some of the newer ones. We've added lacrosse, boys' lacrosse, girls' lacrosse, boys' and girls' rugby. Track and cross-country are some of our newest ones, and actually, that is one of the largest programs already in the state of Indiana. And then our final numbers here are, there we go. Our final numbers here are for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and then our total. So, we haven't put our total up yet, because we're still registering right now for basketball, but we'll be again, over that, between 11,000 and 12,000 participants that will be taking place in our leagues. And right now, we anticipate there are a little bit to level off with some of our numbers. There's a bubble of kids, I think you've probably heard it from the schools or whatever, around that fourth or fifth grade level, and then the numbers either consistently stay level or go down a little bit. And with youth sports, most of the numbers are in that four to 12-year-old. Once you get to 12-year-old, there's a huge drop-off in youth sports, because there's other things for kids to do once they hit junior high. We've been working really, really hard with all of our leagues to try and continue that on. Our junior high basketball program, our baseball, softball, and our intramural program at the high school has really taken off. And we think that's extremely important, not to just let those kids leave when they're 12-years-old, to provide other opportunities. And our intramural basketball, like I said, is, well, it started three years ago, and we're up to about 300 kids, which is great. And I know that two years ago or three years ago, we had about four high school baseball teams, and this year, I think we had seven or eight. So, that number keeps growing, and that's one of our goals, is to keep those kids engaged as long as we can, because we think that's a win-win for the community and for the kids themselves. As our high schools get bigger and bigger, as we all know, the opportunities go down. You've only got 10 kids on a basketball team, you've only got, you know, 20 kids on a baseball team or whatever, so yet, there's a lot of kids who still have ability, who still want to play, so that's where we think that's our job, is to provide that for them. So, we continue to do that. Right now, we do, we are challenged. There's, right now, travel sports is a $7 billion industry in our country. There's a lot of people who believe that their child will be getting a full scholarship to a college. And so, you will see a lot of people out there now who may pull out and go and get specific training, where they're paying thousands of dollars to do that. So, there's people who are leaving to do that. They, instead of playing three sports, which a lot of us grew up doing, now there's, I can do it all in one sport. And again, all the studies that say that's not the thing to do, and if they want to do that, we're absolutely fine with doing that, but we are still going to continue to be community-based. We want to offer for all the kids, the kids who just want to come get their snack and make friends with their neighbors and things like that. So, while we recognize, and those elite-level players are out there, that's not something that we really are working towards. We have travel kids. Our travel programs are all Win House, so they're all kids in the Fisher's that are actually feeding up to our high schools. So, that's kind of what our role is for that. The next document that we have, it's called a Leave Activity and Volunteer Sheet. In this one, basically what it did is, somebody asked us how many people did what, and we thought, well, that's kind of an interesting thing to do. So, what we did is we went through and tried to figure out, this was, I think, last year, how many teams, and we just lumped together, travel and rec. And right now, I'd say our rec. is probably 85% of our kids. We probably have about 15% that play travel. But they're all included in here, so when you look at that, you see the number of teams, you see the number of events, which is really pretty astonishing. When you look at 25,000 events, that's practices and games that are actually scheduled and take place in our community. And then the volunteers really are mostly just the coaches. So, there's volunteers that do everything, and I know a lot of you guys up there have actually participated and done this, but, I mean, we do everything from, you have to line fields, you have to go out when it's wet, and you have to clear fields, you have to beg coaches to coach, because you don't have enough people to coach, you have to order uniforms, you have to do pictures, you have to do schedules. The list goes on and on and on, and that's done by those volunteers and their boards. And I can't say enough, our staff is great, love our staff, but what these people do is volunteers who go out there. This last weekend was a prime example. We had, there was a fall baseball tournament, there was a fall soccer tournament, there was baseball evaluations, a volleyball tournament, and soccer. So, there were thousands and thousands of people, and everybody who put that together, who was out there, were all volunteers. Their kid might not have even been playing, but they were out there, they were doing what was good for the community. So, it was a great weekend, and it just really showcased exactly what we do. So, that one is one, again, like I said, it's, I can't say enough about all of that and what everybody does, so that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we are. And then the last one, and this one won't fit on here, but this is something that we did a while ago. Somebody, we get asked this often, like, why does sports get to use the fields? Why do you guys get to do this, and things like that? And it's a partnership that we've had since 1987 with the city, with town of Fisher's at that time, and with the school district. And basically, we viewed ourselves as kind of the rec. arm of the schools and of the city. And while we organize all of these things, we also, our leagues, put money back into everything. So, basically, what this is, is this is all of the upgrades that we've put into to make the facilities better. The one thing that's not on here, which I don't even know where you would begin, are the manpower hours. So, for all those people that you just saw for those 25,000 events, when somebody's lining a field, when somebody is out at night picking up trash after that last person goes, there's no way that we can put up there those hours. So, all of these dollars that are up there, these are more concrete, these are concession stand equipment pieces, these are scoreboards that you see out at Mud Sock and Billerica. These are all the tangible things that you see. The untangible things are behind the scenes that we do. Basically, what we just wanted to do is, we wanted to come up here, present that, let you know what we're doing. Thank you. We have some of the best facilities in the state of Indiana and really in the Midwest. Sean and his crew keep them that way. Tony helps us out with all that, so can't say enough about them. It's really, again, a unique, private-public partnership. I get called on a regular basis from Center Grove, from Lawrence, from Noblesville, from all sorts of places, saying, how can we do what you do, because it seems to work? When somebody new comes into our community and they want to play, they have a family, they know where to go and they know what to do. So, and as most of you know, it's all about teaching kids about sport, it's about teaching them about life, and it's also about making friends. I mean, some of the people that you sit with at those games will be your friends for life. So, that's all I have to say, if anybody has questions.
Linda, first of all, I want to say thank you to you and your staff, they're always terrific. Linda has to go to a number of other meetings, other than just do that, and I'm going to tell you, just on a basic microcosm, I have coaching for way too long, having to deal with parents, the amount of parents that she has to deal with on a daily basis, she certainly deserves a medal for it. I really believe that. I wholeheartedly agree with the rest of the community. The volunteers are terrific, but really, if you guys don't head that up, it doesn't happen. So, any other questions or comments from council?
Certainly, from my perspective, sure, it's a pleasure of knowing, being a part of a sports program as a coach, and watching all three of my children go through that program, you know, to me, that's kind of the role, kind of what Fisher's is all about, that family-friendly environment, and many of the folks that are still my really good friends today are met through my kids being involved in sports and coaching, and also seeing these kids. Every once in a while, I'll see a kid that I coached, and we'll reconnect and kind of catch up. So, it's a great organization. You do a lot with a limited staff, and the volunteers are exceptional, so my hat's off to you and your team. It's nothing but outstanding.
On behalf of all of them, I thank you for that, so.
I just love coaching, so I have fun with my kids. I get out there all the time with them. Even in the campaign season, I'm out there. Baseball from noon until 8:00 p.m. for fall baseball, we were out on the fields.
It's a long Sunday.
But the kids, I tell you, the kids that, you know, don't have a lot of ability, is one example, I just want to share real briefly. This past, we just had a tournament, and we won our first game at the last second, and this kid cried because we had to play another game. He wanted to go home. And then, I mean, you know, so the next game, though, he hits his first double in the entire season, and we lost the second game, but he had a smile leaving, and that's all the hard work you put in, that's what it's all about, so.
And that's what all the volunteers, that's why people like you do it, for that reason. So, and that's why Fisher's is a great community, because it is supported by everybody, so.
Right, right. So, thanks for what you do.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we'll go ahead to the Public Safety Medical Leadership and Fitness Excellence Award. Chief?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, I'm excited to be before you tonight to announce that your City of Fisher's Department of Fire and Emergency Services has received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Emergency Medical Service Gold Award. Just some of the criteria that they achieved to get this award was a 34% cardiac arrest save rate in the City of Fisher's last year. That's compared to a 9% to 10% national save rate. Over the past four years, we've expanded our ALS paramedic service by 47%, and we were the only Indiana fire department this year to win that award, so they did a really wonderful job. The second award that I'm happy to announce is the Leadership and Fitness Excellence Award. That's the life award. It is co-presented by the Indiana Fire Chiefs Association and Public Safety Medical, and recognizes the exemplary efforts of public safety departments to improve the wellness and fitness of their personnel. Some of the evaluation criteria we were judged on was our labor and management partnership for wellness and fitness, our budgetary commitment, our reduction of disease within our department, i.e. heart attack and cancer, our reduction of workforce injuries over the past four years, and the participation, 100% participation of all our people. So, your support has resulted in improved lifesaving capability in the city, and additionally, improved the health and wellness of our firefighters. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chief, and great work on everybody's behalf. And I think we have a couple of proclamations from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President Peterson. For the record, Scott Fadness, Mayor for the City of Fisher's. We have two proclamations that I'm honored to read tonight. The first we'll start out with is the American Diabetes Association. And we have a representative here tonight, I believe. Could you please come on up, introduce yourself, and then I'll read out the proclamation?
Sure. I am Sue Sandberg. I am a member of the American Diabetes Association Board of Directors and a citizen of Fisher's, Indiana.
Thank you, Sue. So, whereas in the United States nearly 30 million people, including 750,000 in Indiana, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, and whereas in an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes, and whereas increased community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic, and whereas an active lifestyle filled with good eating habits can help to prevent the onset of type 2 diabetes for residents of all ages, and whereas the City of Fisher's is joining the movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadline disease, and therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, do hereby proclaim November as American Diabetes Month, and the City of Fisher's and all residents are encouraged to celebrate. Sign this first day of November, 2015. We'll a little do a pre-sign here, but thank you so much for all of your efforts. The next one, I have a distinct privilege, and this is a unique honor, and I'd ask all of the council members to join me down here in a moment, but first, I'd like to introduce Mr. McKinney. Ethan McKinney, could you come up here?
Hi, Ethan. I'm Scott. Nice to meet you. Well, Ethan has the distinguished honor of being recognized as a champion for Riley's Hospital. Is that right? So, tonight, I'm going to read a proclamation, and then I would really encourage all of you to come down and shake this young man's hand for all that he has done, and get a picture with him, because it'll be quite an honor for each of you to get a picture with him. So, if I could read this, and then maybe you could introduce yourself and tell these guys why you're here? Does that work? Okay. So, whereas in the City of Fisher's, we recognize challenges that residents of all ages face, and we honor those who have overcome and made a difference in our community. And whereas nine-year-old Ethan McKinney of Fisher's will be honored today in light of his selection as one of eight statewide 2016 Riley Champions presented by Kroger, and whereas Ethan has demonstrated strength and perseverance through his medical journey and done so with a positive philanthropic spirit and can-do attitude to support other Riley Hospital patients, and whereas Ethan has proudly supported his family, friends, teachers, Riley Hospital for Children, and our community in Fisher's, therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fisher's, do hereby recognize Ethan McKinney for his bravery, determination, and philanthropic spirit this 22nd day of October, 2015. Congratulations. So, if you could tell these guys a little bit about what you did, and then they're going to come down and get a picture with you, all right?
Hi, my name is Ethan McKinney, and when I was born, I had an extra vessel in my heart, and it didn't close, so I had to have surgery, and they put a spring in it, and now I'm fine. My mom signed me up to be a Riley's Champion, and I was one of eight.
I think that sums it up. If you could all come down here and shake Ethan's hand and get a picture, that'd be great. Here you go, buddy. This is yours. We'll go over here and take a picture with these guys. So, congratulations again. All right, moving along, I'm going to move to our committee report. John, Finance Committee?
Certainly. Thank you, Pete. There's a number of items on the agenda this evening interspersed throughout our agenda that have been, gone through our Budget and Finance Committee. Just want to kind of touch upon those. They will be brought up this evening as we discuss and go through our council meeting. The first one is actually, we're hiring a revenue analyst, someone who's going to be focusing on making sure that we're getting the proper revenue from our various sources throughout the state of Indiana, as well as federal and otherwise. So, another addition to our team in the accounting area, and Oscar will certainly share more about that in a little bit, but it's always good to watch your expenses even more importantly, to make sure you're getting all the revenue that's coming your way. Item two, we're going to be talking a little bit about sewer rate adjustment, and that's something that's been through the Budget and Finance Committee, and we're in full support of moving forward with this. There are some infrastructure improvements that are going to be vital for the future for our community, they're going to be very important to us. Other things on the agenda, cash reserve and liquidity, kind of policy statement, if you will, debt management policies, if you will, it's talked about proper cash management, keeping proper reserves in place, which we've always had that policy, and also debt management policy as well. And lastly, certainly most importantly, we'll be passing our, hopefully passing our budget, I think we will, our budget this evening, which has already been through a number of first readings, public hearings, and also gone through the Budget Finance Committee meeting. That is what's going on with the Budget Finance Committee.
Thank you, John. And then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's any questions or comments. Second? Motion by God, second by John. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, I'm going to move on to, I'm going to move an item on the agenda, I'm going to take item 20 and move it up to now. Before I let the mayor go ahead and get started, I did want to go ahead and make mention of a couple of people we have in the audience. We have, we have two county commissioners in the audience, Mr. Steve Dillinger, I believe, Mr. Mark Airbrandt is also in the building as well, hiding there and back. Certainly appreciate seeing you guys here down in our meeting here in Fisher's, so welcome.
For the record, Mayor Scott Fadness here tonight to present to you a memorandum of understanding between the Indianapolis Airport and the City of Fisher's. I think it's important to note that Commissioner Dillinger, who Pete Peterson just recognized, as well as Mario Rodriguez, the Executive Director of the Indianapolis Airport, is here as well tonight. And truly, I can tell you, and I think it's been reiterated by Commissioner Dillinger, we've had an extraordinary process of open dialogue and collaboration with the airport, and really has been a paradigm shift over the last several months, and I want to thank Commissioner Dillinger and Executive Director Rodriguez for their work on this. It's been, it's really been a true pleasure working with both of them. To give you a little history, the City of Fisher's has had varying opinions on what should happen with the airport. At one point, there was a discussion of the expansion of the
where this is really a very unique relationship spelled out in this memorandum of understanding, which basically the Indianapolis Airport Authority is delegating the responsibility to develop a master plan for this area, as well as delegating the responsibility to draft a request for proposal for developers and negotiate and work with the developers to bring back a project to the Indianapolis Airport Authority for final approval. The land is owned by the Indianapolis Airport Authority and will continue to be owned by the Indianapolis Airport Authority throughout this entire process. And so that's really a unique relationship where they're willing to collaborate with an entity such as Fishers to work through the development of this project. We think it's about 200 acres of developable land around the airport that could come on to the tax rules. And to give you an example of what that means, I recently asked our staff, how much commercially-zoned land do we have? And if we were to add this into that inventory, what does that mean to the City of Fishers? And it increases the amount of inventory we have by about 18%, which is not insignificant. That means if we were to find good development to go in there, that's property tax revenue that can go to our schools, go to our local services, good-paying jobs, and all of the above. But I think not only from an economic development perspective does this make sense, this relationship ensures that we can have a long and in-depth discussion with our residents about what type of development they really want to see down there. And so I think it's important to note, tonight is just the formation of this relationship between the airport and the city. So now we have a framework. Going forward, over the coming months, you're going to see an extended dialogue with our community about what they'd like to see there. How do we develop in such a way that's sensitive to assets like Ritchie Woods? How do we develop in a way that we're thoughtful about traffic congestion? What type of economic development do we want to see? So, tonight is not a, by any means, a finality to what's going to happen there, but rather, we're forming a relationship to start that discussion about what could happen there. And so I, I would fully recommend that the council consider this memorandum of understanding, and the staff and I, along with council members, will start the due diligence process of developing a master land and engaging the public on what they would like to see in that area. With that, I would certainly invite Commissioner Dillinger to come up and say a few words on behalf of the Indianapolis Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, you know, this is, this is kind of a neat day for me, as some of you guys know. We've, we've had a little bit of a tedious situation with the airport and what was wanted to be done, what might want to be done, versus what will be done and what wasn't ever going to be done. So when Pete and John first approached me on this, I was very, very, very excited that all of a sudden, people were recognizing what we felt like we already recognized, and that's the value of an airport from an economic development standpoint. I can tell you, the Hamlin County Airport has generated just an unbelievable amount of economic development on the western side of Noblesville, or of Hamlin County. And the numbers we ran with Indianapolis Airport Authority when the decision was made it was going to stay in the airport has been phenomenal. I think what has happened here, and certainly thanks to Mayor Fadness and, and to you folks working in conjunction with the Indianapolis Airport, which I happen to be Hamlin County's appointee to the Indianapolis Airport, I think the economic development that'll be created, not only for Fishers, but as a county commissioner, I'm kind of excited to the tax generation for the county as well. And I don't think there's many airports that give up land. And so the decision by the Indianapolis Airport Authority to do that, not only here, but in Hendricks County and also around the airport, on the unused land to make it productive, is, it's just been a phenomenal trip, if you will. As, as we went through this, there was no clinical agendas, no power agendas. It was probably one of the most enjoyable efforts that I have seen in government, working together, doing the right things for the right reasons. So I want to thank you very much. I appreciate, hopefully, we'll get your vote tonight, and we'll be going down the road. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Commissioner Dillinger. And I do want to reiterate that this is really the first step of a three- or four-step process. Now that the relationship is formed and it's before your consideration, if approved tonight, what happens next is we go into the planning phase, which is when we really engage our residents in what kind of development would you like to see? What are the transportation concerns? What are the environmental concerns that we have? All of those things we're going to work through and really engage the public over the coming months. Tonight is really the formation of a relationship between the Indianapolis Airport Authority and the City of Fishers. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have at this point. Any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, Pete, just a couple comments, excuse me. I had a couple neighbors that called, and I'm supportive. But I just wanted to just mention a couple points. When I first moved here in 1996, the biggest thing that was talked about in Fishers was an expansion of the runway. And that was going to bring in more jets and just different, you're going to have a certain length that you have to cap it at, and that's going to limit, you know, what can't come in. But if you do expand, then it could bring in more jet traffic. And that was the big, I guess, discussion at the time. And that's, to a certain extent, why it morphed into possibly moving or just looking at other avenues. So I think, Scott, what you've done and Commissioner, to, to work through is to get through a dialogue so that some of the property can be used, but it can be used for other purposes as opposed to an expansion of the runway. So I think these are both almost mutually exclusive. Because of this potential development, it limits that as being a possibility. So I think that that's something way back in the 90s that I think that people in that general area would, would wonder about. So that's one thing, is that no expansion, and by doing this development, it would limit that. The other side is, obviously, the airport wants to do something more with their property. They're looking at it at the main campus, you know, where the old terminal was, other areas, and they're looking at this as well. So something's going to happen, so I think it's good for us to do it collaboratively. So as you mentioned, Scott, this is really the first step to create a master plan, and that master plan really starts today. It's not something that's even being looked at or debated. It's really a white piece of paper, putting down the things, pluses and minuses, working through that. That includes all sorts of public meetings to make that happen. So I think it's good because it limits potential runways, but then it also brings about some expansion for the airport, but it, it does that in a manner that the public can be involved and Fishers can determine how that path would go in a collaborative manner.
Thank you, David. Any other comments, questions?
Just, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I like the, the comment that the continued collaboration with the, with the residents. I think that's, as we've gone through this process, especially in the southwest part of Fishers, just making sure that they're fully integrated, understand what's going on. But that Commissioner Dillinger and Mayor Fadness and, and President or Vice President of the council, I appreciate you guys working together through this. I think it's an opportunity for Fishers to continue to grow the right way.
I want, I want to thank Steve personally, because I think one of the very first meetings I had after I was elected to this office was about this airport, so it's nice to see it's come full around. And, and John and I really just showed up at Wood Aviation for the fly one, get one free pass, really. So I'm glad the thing all finally worked out for us, but, yeah, it was, yeah, it was nice. Didn't get that, ride in that airplane I wanted, but certainly appreciate all the effort the mayor's put in, and, and the commissioners, and, and everybody else at the Airport Authority. I think it's going to be a terrific thing for, for the community, again, from the economic development side, which is going to maintain the vitality for this community going forward for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. It, it plays into exactly the direction which we want it to go.
And I think you can expect, if, if approved tonight, what will happen over the next few months is that we will do a, a master plan process where there'll be a number of open houses where people can come in, ensure their comments and concerns, ideas and thoughts, and ultimately, we'd bring that plan back, much like we are tonight for a public hearing and a council approval. If that were to be approved, then it goes to the airport for final approval. And then from there, we get, we go into a request for proposal. So we're not, we're a ways away from anything econo, concrete economic development, but we've at least formalized a great relationship with a good partner.
Thank you again. Any, no other comments? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Indianapolis Airport Authority and the City of Fishers.
Second.
John, second by Cecilia. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back up to our top of our agenda, item number seven, Ordinance 081715C.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlekowski, a planner with the Community Development Department. This item before you, we'll try to make as quick as possible, is a proposed text amendment to the Welchel Springs Planted Unit Development. This item went back, was in front of council for first reading back in August. It went to the Plan Commission in September, where it received a positive recommendation. And basically what it is, it's a text amendment which changes the minimum lot frontage requirement from 50 feet down to 40 feet in District 3 only. And this is a section of empty nester product. This, this essentially was a petition or oversight in the PUD that we're trying to correct right now. It's important to know that as part of this application, they would still be adhering to the 60-foot-wide lot width at building line standard. So really, the, the 40-foot frontage is on cul-de-sacs. It should be noted that a primary plat amendment is required. That will need to be done via a separate action with the Plan Commission. And lastly, this proposal would increase the overall lot count from 259 lots to 261. But it should be noted that 277 lots were approved originally with the zoning. So this diagram here simply shows the distinction between lot frontage and how we measure that, so this would go down to 40 feet. This dimension here, the lot width at the building line, would have to be a minimum of 60 feet. And this is the overall layout of District 3, which is near Florida Road. So with that, I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions from council?
Thank you. I was just conversing with a council member here. Just for clarity and first, you know, as it runs with the land, and years from now, or as it's developed, you know, you make reference to the cul-de-sacs and in the, and the lot reduction for those specific lots, given the conditions, and then the attachments, you know, give an exhibit of the plat and identify specific lots. Is the language, though, in the, in the actual code going to be uniquely calling out these lots, or be, so it doesn't, is, is it going to be limited and restricted to these particular lots, as opposed to 40-foot could be, you know, someone else who buys the property, if it develops and says, well, I want to apply the 40-foot to, you know, 15 lots, then I'm going to apply them in various places, that sort of thing. So can you be, I think, Todd, we're looking to see that, sort of the consistency of the language holds with what you're describing?
Right. The, to answer your question, it, it doesn't specifically call out these cul-de-sac lots, but this is the only situation where this occurs. So as long as the, again, the lot width at the building line is at least 60 feet, then we're covered that way. So for example, all the other lots in District 3, you know, those need to be 60-foot-wide lots. And so as long as, again, it's not specific to the cul-de-sac lots, but it's the only scenario in which that situation would present itself.
And I think, sure, I was the one on point, David, I don't know if you were there for that meeting. I mean, again, you know, basically, all of these are plotted, so they're recorded. So, yeah, I don't know that it was specific. I don't know that we talked about that. Is it being specific just for those two cul-de-sac? But I believe there was some comment on it.
Yeah, I think it was just, was that the end of your question, Stuart? I don't want to jump in. Because if you go back two Plan Commissions ago, this was there, and it was kind of that moment where it was understood that these amount of lots could not go there with this requirement. So I think this, as you said, Adam, this is coming full circle to make sure that's there. So I guess the way I'd look at it, is I guess I can vote for this, but I want to make sure that this doesn't set a precedent so that others don't come in and say, hey, I've got a cul-de-sac, as long as I've got the 60 feet, then I can go down to the 40 feet at the property where it touches the cul-de-sac. So I just want to make sure that we, we do review those and that this one instance maybe happens, but it doesn't become what happens in the future.
Yeah, because I mean, from a practical land development, it goes to my mind is we, we, this lot or something, basically, it's, they squeeze the cul-de-sac diameter. To comply with code, they could have made the cul-de-sac diameter bigger, which might have eliminated the lot. You know, but you squeeze the cul-de-sac down at practical level, you get an extra lot, and it necessitates this 40-foot. So today's point, we don't want all of a sudden to start squeezing down the cul-de-sac diameter of the, of the circle at the terminus of the cul-de-sac street, so that it, that this becomes a prevalent issue. I think that's what Kate's point, just trying to draw it out to, you know, sort of a graphic way, makes sense to me, and maybe others, that, you know, it's the size of the diameter of the cul-de-sac that describes this. If you disagree, let us know.
Well, the, yeah, the cul-de-sac, the diameter of the cul-de-sac, the radius of the cul-de-sac is set up so that it can, so a fire truck can navigate around the cul-de-sac. So that's really the, the governing standard for the size of those, and then, you know, the lots are, are put in accordingly.
But either case, even if it was the same diameter, you would still basically reduce a lot so that you can make the, the diameter or the, the width at the cul-de-sac and the width where the houses, those both meet. In this case, it does not meet, so that's why the request is being made. The other way to make it is to reduce a lot, and then everything works out. So I guess my, again, my main thing, I'll, I'll vote for it tonight, but I just want to make sure that, just to help back you guys off as staff, when you see this, I want to make sure that people don't come in and say, that happened there, I want to go ahead and, you know, maneuver my site plan and future developments so this works. That's not what I want to see.
Any other comments from, is there any comments on the petition? Do we have a public hearing on this? Any petition, or want to make any comments? If not, I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
Make a motion to suspend the rules considered on second reading?
Second.
All those in favor suspending rules, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance itself.
Motion by Stewart.
Motion by Stuart. Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item number eight.
For the record, Scott Fadness, Mayor. Before you tonight is the final and third reading of the 2016 annual budget. If you recall that we had our public hearing per state statute at the last council meeting, it has been properly noticed and advertised in, in both occurrences, both at the public hearing and for final adoption. This has been submitted to the county for their approval as well, and so we've met all state mandated timelines and public hearing perspectives, as well as the documents that were at the agenda last time have continued to be up on our agenda, on our website, as well as, I believe there was an article in Town Talk reviewing where our budget stands. Nothing has changed in the budget since our last conversation. Really, tonight, I'm here to entertain any questions that you may have, and keep in mind, we do need to have a budget adopted no later than November 1st per state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments for the mayor, any questions for the mayor regarding the budget? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's 2016 municipal budget.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Stuart. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to item nine.[1675.41] ahead and call for a motion.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, consider it on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance itself.
Motion, Denver.
Motion by Stewart.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item number eight.
For the record, Scott Fadness, Mayor. Before you tonight is the final and third reading of the 2016 annual budget. If you recall that we had our public hearing per state statute at the last council meeting, it has been properly noticed and advertised in both occurrences, both at the public hearing and for final adoption. This has been submitted to the county for their approval as well. And so we've met all state mandated timelines and public hearing perspectives, as well as the documents that were at the agenda last time have continued to be up on our agenda, on our website, as well as, I believe there was an article in Town Talk reviewing where our budget stands. Nothing has changed in the budget since our last conversation. Really, tonight, I'm here to entertain any questions that you may have. And keep in mind, we do need to have a budget adopted no later than November 1st per state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments for the mayor, any questions for the mayor regarding the budget? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's 2016 municipal budget.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Stewart. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to item nine.
Thank you. For the record, Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. What you have in front of you is a proposal for a wastewater rate increase. This is an item that has been discussed at a public meeting at the Finance Committee. So this has been discussed with them, and I just wanted to briefly touch up on some of the highlights of this proposal. We're going to take a look back, look at the service area, the projects, and the outlook of this proposal, if it takes effect, and the proposed rates. So taking a look back, in 1997, the town of Fishers had to make a decision to raise their sewer rate by $5, taken it from $21 to $26 per EDU. So almost a decade later, the town conducted a rate study that indicated that they had immediate infrastructure needs that had to take place. And there was recommendation to the City Council, at the time, Town Council, to raise the rates. If you remember around 2008, when the financial downturn was taking place, and this body decided that against taking action at that point to allow citizens to maximize the money they did have in their pockets. So to clarify, what is our service area that we're in charge of in the city? If you look at the Delaware Township that's outlined by the green line, that is the area that we control currently. Everything that's on the Fall Creek Township line is controlled by Hamilton Southeastern Utilities. So this proposal would affect only our residents, but we would also be passing on an equivalent wholesale charge to the township residents as well, Fall Creek Township. So there are currently three items that are in immediate need of infrastructure improvements. Smol Creek Lift Station improvements that can range anywhere between $2.7 to $5 million based on the decisions that will be taken by this body. The 106th Street Forest Main to Allisonville to Chene Creek, and that will be about $3.7. Then Hager Road to Allisonville Road Forest Main, that's about $3 million. All of these items have significant amounts of details, and we have a website that's dedicated for this purpose. So if residents want to go to fishers.in.us/wastewaterrate, it will highlight in detail what each one of these improvements encompass. I would like to try to tell you, but I'm not an engineer nor a wastewater professional. So looking at the proposed rate of $31, we're currently at 26. If we were to go up to the proposed $5 rate of $31, how would we look to our neighbors, compared to our neighbors? If you look at Carmel, who would be the next closest, $34.97, they actually about a week ago proposed a rate increase themselves. So we would still be the lowest rate out of any of the municipalities around us. One thing to highlight in this chart is, if you look at the red graph there, if we had grown just at the rate of inflation and had grown every year at the rate of inflation, our rates today would be at $38. However, I think that our utility is probably one of the most efficient utilities, private or public, and we're able to operate at a very moderate rate of $26 today. So if we look at a $5 rate increase, what would that do to our cash reserves? The red dotted line encompasses what our cash reserves would look like over a period of time. And as you can see, it would allow the city to start to build up cash reserves that will also be used towards future projects that will be needed. Our DPW team has additional projects that they are forecasting for the future. So by doing this rate, we'll have enough cash reserves to address those at a future date. So what are the rates that we're proposing? We're looking at a $5 end-user increase. So we're looking, so the $5 end-users per EDU. So if you look at the $31 that we're proposing, if you take 75% of that, that's the apartment rate, and that's why it's not an exact $5 on that. Everything else is being passed on by exactly $5 to each end-user. So the next steps for this will be that next month, we'll advertise a public hearing, and we'll have all the information up. As we get ready to send out our billing this month, there'll be an insert that allows our residents to be informed about our public hearing. We want to have as much input as possible, and this presentation will be up there as well as the website. And I'm happy to entertain any questions if you may have any.
Oscar, if you could go back one slide. So if I, you know, and people can remember this, the graphic you put, you know, certainly, we have the treatment facility, treatment plant. You, in the map you highlighted, the green and the red were two different collection zones. One, a collection area that we have, sort of the pipes in the ground, collecting the effluent. And then HSE's collection area outside of that. And our wholesale rate is applied to HSE. And so can you clarify or provide more understanding, if we were to pass the $5 and the commensurate, you know, different increases, the wholesale rate proposed here would go up $1.3. And now, is, would then Hamilton Southeastern have to go to the IURC to pass that on, or is it a direct pass-on? So currently, in the HSE collection area, our residential rate, you know, is $34.63, I think. Whereas, as you noted, ours is 26. So there's already a differential. So what's not clear for me, and maybe for residents here in the Fishers collection area, 26 to 31 is very clear for the utility that we control, and we set the rate. Where HSE would have to, I believe they would have to go to the IURC, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, or is it a pass-through $1.03 automatic addendum to the $34.63, $34.63?
So let me try and address as many of those as I can, and bear with me. The first question you asked is if they would pass through any increase that we would have. And that would be up to Hamilton Southeastern Utilities. If they do decide to pass it through their residents, they would have to go before their governing body. The second question that you asked me was the clarification-
That was the fundamental point. That, I mean, that was only really one. We're showing that we would increase, which we have the right to do, to HSE, the wholesale rate relative to this flow. And so then, what would be, you know, in citizens here, in all of Fishers, you know, either you're in one of the two collection areas predominantly. And so you would, if you're watching or you're here in the audience, you know, if this works through, if you're a Fishers collection area, you're going to go to 31. If you're a HSE collection area, you're not quite sure yet that-
Our goal, yeah. Our goal was, doing a thorough analysis using a consultant, we identified a wholesale rate that, based on several assumptions that we made, would equate to a $5 increase in their overall rate to a Hamilton Southeastern utility provider.
$5 also?
$5 also.
Okay.
Now, whether or not they decide to pass that 100% on to the customer is going to be dependent upon two things. One, HSE Utilities, if they decide to do that. And two, they have to go to the Indiana Regulatory Commission and advocate for why the 100% increase needs to be passed on to their user. That is typically called a tracker, and so it kind of attaches on to an already rate case that they're working on. So this was our best ability to provide parity in terms of increase to both users.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you, Oscar.
And yeah, the questions from council, and note, this is only a first reading, so.
Motion at first reading.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thanks, Oscar. Moving on to item number 10. I believe this is a, is this just a voluntary annexation, Adam? Any questions by council on the voluntary annexation? I know, we got a public hearing, and we got to suspend the rules. I saw that. I just want to, you know, this is Welchel Springs, we just dealt with earlier. We've talked about it a number of times. It is a voluntary annexation, is that correct? So we've seen this, we've seen this development quite a bit. I'm going to go ahead and ask somebody for a motion to suspend the rules.
Well, just to be clear, Pete, we're not going to be suspending the rules. It's just first, second reading in the public hearing, and I suspect Adam will-
I saw, I saw third reading.
Yep.
I saw third reading, okay.
You're okay.
So I'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and state your name and address for the record. And please leave your comments as they relate to this ordinance. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And so we're not acting at all, is what you're saying? Chris?
I'm sorry.
There was no action at all, then?
No action. You have the motion to hold first and second reading.
Very good. Just want to check. Moving on to item number 11, then. Thanks, Adam.
For the record, my name is Kevin Stots. I'm a planner in the Department of Community Development. I'm here to present the request for first reading on the Gallagher Storage Rezone Request. The subject site is located in southwest Fishers here, along Allisonville Road. This is Willow View Road. Actually, if you zoom in a little bit closer, you will see the site highlighted and read here. Again, Allisonville Road, Willow View Road, the airport, as we just discussed earlier tonight. The site itself has three parcels and two zoning districts today. The northern parcel is zoned MA Municipal Airport. The southern two parcels are zoned C2 Commercial. So the request to rezone would take the current zoning of C2 and MA to a planned unit development slash commercial, so PUDC in this instance. The permitted uses proposed for the PUDC would be the existing C2 Commercial District uses, which already apply on those southern lots I just pointed out. I'm not going to take the time to read each of those uses, but as they were in your staff report, you could see it as a wide range of uses. One additional use that would be requested tonight is obviously the self-storage itself as a permitted use. The petitioner has proposed that the PUD will follow the development standards, which are outlined in our Unified Development Ordinance, applicable to the C2 zoning district, outside of these five standards, which I've listed here. And the reports are up on the board tonight. I'll quickly go over those. As building setbacks would be the first one. The minimum building setback along Willow View Road to the east of the site would actually be 50 feet per the ordinance, the Unified Development Ordinance today. The petitioner's request would be to reduce that to 30 feet on that eastern side again. The second, the floor area ratio for our C2 Commercial District is somewhat confusing, but I've highlighted the portion that applies to the proposed project tonight, which states that no single user may exceed 55,000 square feet, and no development shall exceed 90,000 square feet in the C2 zoning district. The request before you tonight would be that no single building shall be larger than 128,000 square feet. They have proposed to modify the parking standards. The UDO would require one space per 5,000 or one space per six leasable storage units. The proposal will be for five total spaces on-site, as shown on the concept plan, which the petitioner will go over with you briefly here shortly. And then the structure quantity standards, just to clarify, they point out that no more than one primary structure shall be allowed on one parcel. They would like to have one large storage facility with another and located to the north, as you'll see on the concept plan here in just a minute. And then, within the current open space standards regulation in Article 7 of our Unified Development Ordinance, it does give the City Council the ability to dictate which open space can count on-site. And in this case, they would like that any unimproved areas of the real estate would apply into their 20% open space requirement. So again, that's, as this is first reading, just highlighted the changes-
Can you restate that last point again, the open space? Can you restate that?
The request is that any unimproved, or unimproved areas on the real estate would count as their open space. So I'll let the petitioner highlight those details in just a minute as they go through their plan in the packet here, so that they'll point out what the open space is referring to in that instance. Okay. And I just leave you here with the concept plan, which was provided in the PUD, and then elevations as well, showing what compliance to the Unified Development Ordinance architecture standards, what kind of product that would result in. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve Harden, representing the petitioner, to go over the details of the project itself. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagery Baker Daniels and a proud resident of the City of Fishers. I'm here this evening representing Gallagher Development. And with me, from California, where his headquarters are located, is Mr. Kelly Gallagher. If you happen to have any questions for him. Mr. Gallagher has been active in the storage industry for a long time. We've had a number of meetings with him, with the mayor, with the staff, to talk about this site and about the industry itself, the market demands and how this type of use helps to support local small businesses. Approximately a third of the users of self-storage facilities are small businesses, whether they're storing their samples, they're storing their files or other materials that they have. The rest of the use typically are individuals and households that are going through a variety of different transitions and needs for the use. One of the things that was very interesting in working with Mr. Gallagher, and he's done projects not only across the United States but across the world, in different parts of Europe, is that he does a very specific analysis of market demand saturation, looking at different sites to determine what's going, where the demand is and what makes the most sense of where to locate something. He came upon the site that Kevin mentioned, and thank you, Kevin, for your guidance and work on this project today. We do appreciate it. First off, what attracted Mr. Gallagher to Fishers in this particular quadrant is there is a, sort of a saturation model that looks at the square footage of storage space per person in a particular five-mile radius. And the standard in the industry for where you're at equilibrium is seven square feet per person within a five-mile area. In this particular area, if you drew a five-mile radius around this site, it's well under four. So that is a substantial number that is below the supply to meet the demand from local businesses and local residents. Secondly, what Mr. Gallagher and his team do when they look at sites around the country is, unlike some of our other clients that are looking for the perfect, the easy, the logical site that is super easy to develop, in fact, they look for the sites that are the last ones standing. They look for those irregular-shaped sites that have something weird or odd about them next door that leads other people that might otherwise develop it for some other use to not want that particular site. There could be overhead power lines, there could be a fire station, there could be an airport next door, there could be an outdoor storage of construction equipment and materials, or who knows what it might be. In this particular case-
Good examples.
Those are real examples, actually. It's not probably apparent, if you can't see it here, but those are actual real examples in this case.
Right.
It is a regular-shaped site. It has weird, an odd angle to it that creates a small, unusual frontage. It does have a fire station next door. It has an airport across the street, and it has outdoor storage of construction materials in the back, which obviously could lead some people to not, to want to locate there. The property's been on the market for some time. I believe it's one of the last, if not the last, site standing in this corridor. So the market demand is there. There's some oddities about the site that leaves it nonproductive today. And one of the things that the city leadership and the Development Department gave direction to Mr. Gallagher when we first talked about the project, after we talked about the use and the appropriateness, was his commitment and the city's guidance to look at the surrounding areas, look at the architecture, the materials, the coloring in that, in that area. And so his team did that. They looked at the materials on the fire station, on the Hagerman Building, on the senior living project across the street, and tried to take the style, the masonry, and the colors that were there to incorporate into this project. So what you see in the architectural elevation is a mixture of masonry and EPIS and other materials that they think are going to look attractive and fit in with this area. One of the other things that's unusual, and as I was listening to Kevin give his staff report, it struck me that we might want to tie some of these standards to just the storage use, because the property, part of it's already zoned C2, and then the other part's zoned to MA. So the changes, the modifications that we're proposing to the C2 really only apply or intended to apply to just to self-storage. So if someone ever wanted to redevelop the site- So what you see in the architectural elevation is a mixture of masonry and EPAS and other materials that they think are going to look attractive and fit in with this area. One of the other things that's unusual, and as I was listening to Kevin give his staff report, it struck me that we might want to tie some of these standards to just the storage use because the property, part of it's already zoned C2, and then the other part's zoned to MA. So the changes, the modifications that we're proposing to the C2 really only apply or intended to apply to just to self-storage. So if someone ever wanted to redevelop the site for C2, that 90,000-square-foot limitation, if my memory is right, was really aimed at trying to not allow big grocery stores to come into certain areas where it was, you know, had a C2 zoning. So there isn't an attempt to put the camel's nose under the tent here. It's really just aimed at a two-story building that has more of a 60,000-square-foot footprint in this case. So we'll take a look at that with Kevin and his team as we go towards the Plan Commission. The other thing that's very interesting about this particular proposal is it's all, almost 85% of it will be climate-controlled. And it has, may not be completely apparent, but I believe this is the only facility like this here in the area. But as you can see here, this is it, it was drive-through. So there are no doors facing outside the exterior. That wasn't even a consideration here. Everything is focused on the inside. And so when you actually drive through the facility, the main part, there's two buildings, a small building here with the doors facing in, and then the rest of the main building, you actually drive in to an area and the doors shut. Do you have some questions?
Yeah, just maybe if you could, you know, draw the special attention like you are getting through now, the requests and how they relate to the site plan.
Sure.
And, you know, the five spots versus, you know, our standard, you know, because this drive-through may be critical to the relationship of only five parking spots then.
Sure.
Things like that. And then this open space issue.
Sure.
Because the whole thing is a building, right? There is no real, except on the peripheral.
So, thank you. The, let's see, the parking spaces, really, this is, again, this is probably what we need to do in the PUD ordinance, is to tie any of these modifications to the self-storage use because that's what it's driven at. There'd be no need to put the same parking field for this proposed use as you would for a grocery store or a, you know, super, or a drugstore. So they really were just showing the number of parking spaces from a functional perspective, from what Mr. Gallagher's vast experience has told him is the appropriate number of spaces. I think that's comparable to the other projects that we've done. 116th and Brook School is a recent example. We'll go back and take a look at that. But it's not because they're going to be indoors. They will be indoors as they're loading and offloading inside. So there would be some, obviously, those vehicles will be parking in there. And then the rest of the parking is really aimed at just those folks when they first come in to get signed up and things like that.
So just, you know, this is maybe, maybe in our demographic or in this district, it appears to me to be unique relative to other storage, you know, units, which you can vary various garage lifts or doors, or, but people usually drive up, you know, and they can drive around inside. So, you know, just, is this, the width of that drive-through, I didn't see it noted, is that going to allow for stacking? Two cars can go, can pass each other, things like that?
Yeah, they'll be able to inside. I don't know about, I think you'd probably have one vehicle at a time entering and exiting. But that'll, there'll be open areas there for people to be able to move around if they needed to.
And it's open air?
It is.
Okay.
There'll be, and I'm going to wait for Mr. Gallagher to grab me if I say something incorrectly, but my understanding is to get to the second floor inside, there's elevators that you could offload, put your things on a cart, go up the elevator, and then drop them off, and then get back to your vehicle. The open space, the reason we do, and we've done this on a few projects, just because there's a requirement for 20% open space, so we're not seeking to change that. All they're seeking to do is to say the greens, the open space that you see, anything that's pervious, not, anything that doesn't have asphalt or buildings on it, we're going to count that as the open space rather than trying to go through, I mean, I don't want to criticize the UDO, but it's a little bit complicated to have to calculate up. It's easier for someone probably from, who's from out of state, to say, what's my open space? How do I figure out what I need to do? So we're just saying what you see up here. So anything that is on private property, so here's like the proposed right-of-way. So if it's not on the property, that wouldn't count. This will be green space, which is in the right-of-way. But all of this area, any area here that's outside the right-of-way on the property after the right-of-way's been dedicated, that is green space or the ponds, anywhere like that that's open, that doesn't have, you know, improvements on it, would be counted as open space. And I don't have a calculation of whether that's 20% as shown or not, but it would have to be 20% to meet the UDO's requirement. This is the concept plan at this stage.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, a couple things. I appreciate your comments, Steve, to make PUD language for these particular requirements. I was going to ask the same thing as Kevin was going through. And then the other, the big one that I've got is, is this a tilt panel structure? How's this going to be built?
This is a, Kevin, yeah, you'll come up for a moment. This is a metal panel. It's the same type of material and construction, I'll try to answer this, as the Shamrock Project at 116th and Brook School. So it's a metal panel, there's metal panels.
Okay.
That have the stucco finish on the outside.
Okay. That kind of leads to the thing I was going to bring up is, I know that you mentioned a couple of the other buildings in the area, looking at that as a model, but I'd recommend looking to the south, to Hagerman, where it's all brick. I'd like to see you add far more brick than you have now.
Okay.
In replace of masonry, or as opposed to EPAS style.
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, we can get some support up here, but I just, I think over the long term, that'll look a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Have first reading, refer to Plan Commission.
Thank you, Stuart. All right, moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. For the record, Rick Farnham, Assistant Director of the Public Works Department. Chapter 51 of the municipal code is the sewer use ordinance. In it, it's provided some general guidelines and definition for the control of fat soils and greases being introduced to the sanitary sewer system. But it is just sort of a general guidance in that ordinance. So staff has worked to develop a more specific document that provides food service facilities, mainly restaurants, with more guidance on how to be registered, how the proper pretreatment equipment installed, and how to report to us. We were using that guidance for probably the last year and a half on a voluntary basis. This past July, we went to the Board of Public Works and Safety and actually had that policy or management program officially adopted. Before you, tonight though, for your consideration, is a violation of fee schedule, which we would like you to consider for approval. It provides us a little bit of a compliance tool to actually enforce this program. Up to this point, on a voluntary basis, we've had rather low compliance out of around 135 facilities that we seek to get information from. We've received registration forms from about 60%. And the actual quarterly reporting we've asked for, it's about 20%. So even though we've done a public education campaign and a number of mailings, our compliance is still relatively low, so we're asking for this tool to help us. Tonight, we're asking for first, second, and third reading and approval of this ordinance.
So is this more of a compliance, you know, to get the compliance of sort of affirming their, from a paperwork point of view, and affirming their position? But how does it relate to if they are actually physically violating the discharge?
This is mainly, as you recognize, this is mainly a way for us to gather the information to understand really what's going on at each one of these facilities. So through a registration process, we should know what type of pretreatment equipment they have there. Even though it may have been dictated during the construction process, we really have no way of knowing really what was there now, how it's being used, how it's being maintained by the staff or by outside contractors. From that information, we're hoping then we can do inspections of restaurants on a, as needed basis. If they're compliant, there's no need for inspections. If we have issues, then we would do inspections. And this has really come up from a need from the collection system side. We've had three sanitary sewer overflows related to grease in recent years. And this is something that's really prohibited by the regulatory agencies. We need to get better control of this. And you can imagine with 135 food facilities, just in our district, you'd mentioned both districts earlier, HSCs and the cities. This is just in the cities, so there's quite a few.
So is it fair to say this is really, you know, as you noted, a first, another improving step around compliance, but to the, and that, therefore, education, you know, and training, and then, you know, affirming that you're complying is part of it? But if someone, if we still see actual events, is it, is it, do we have the capability of tracing these things back to a violator?
Yeah, actually, these type of overflows we've had, it's really easy to trace it back to a particular either food service facility or a group of facilities that we can then inspect, but usually pretty obvious. Unfortunately, this type of material, although too graphic, but it sets up like concrete in our sewer system at times. If there's been a excessive discharge, very difficult to clean, very difficult to take care of the issue.
Excellent. Make a motion to suspend the rules. Consider on first reading.
Second. Motion by Stuart, second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance 101915C.
Motion by Stuart.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Item 13.
Good evening, members of the city council. For the record, C.C. Hendricks, Human Resources Director. Before you deny it, has a request to amend both the 2015 and 2016 salary ordinance to add two new job titles. The job titles are Revenue Analyst and Events Coordinator. And since we've already passed the 2016 salary ordinance, that's why I'm requesting to amend it tonight as well.
Thank you, C.C. Any question for C.C.? Just quickly, I guess, there's obviously no change in the budget due to these. It's really just adding a title so that they can be paid if hired within the budget that's already established.
Correct.
Do we make a motion separately for D and E, or is that one?
I don't know, can we handle together?
No, make two separate votes for two separate.
Okay, two separate. Is there a public hearing requirement?
No.
No public hearing requirement. So I need a motion to suspend the rules first.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Stuart. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 101915D.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Stuart. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 14.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and pass item 14 on first reading.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 101915E.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, C.C.
Thank you, C.C.
Item 15.
Thank you again for the record, also Gutierrez, City Controller. The ordinance before you is a request to approve, the, a request to approve ordinance pledging the city's tribute to Sheriff County Option Income Tax coat revenues to the payment of the Fishers Redevelopment District bonds. What this is, is the increase of a bond anticipation note from $4.8 million to $6.2 million. This has already gone through the redevelopment commission. It was approved unanimously. And it also held a public hearing that was also noticed. So this is just a statutory approval of their approval.
Of their action?
Correct.
Any public requirement for us, Chris?
Hold it on first reading.
Is there any questions for Oscar?
Was there any comment at the public hearing that's already been held?
There was not.
Okay. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Stuart.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed.
Motion to consider for approval, ordinance 101915F.
Motion by Stuart.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 16.
Items 16 and 17 are both policies that we've been discussing with the Finance Committee. Item 16 is the city debt management policy. We have had a debt management policy. It has just not been formalized. What my staff did in conjunction with the Finance Committee was take best practice from Standard and Poor's, who is our primary rating agency, and GF Way, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. And we compiled best practices along with our existing practices and formalized the document for both the city debt management policy as well as our reserve policy, which will remain at 50% of the next year's property tax revenue. So again, we've taken everything that we have been doing over the last, I'm not sure how many decades, those policies have been in place, but have not been formalized. So this is just taking a formal step to allow the rating agencies to give us a checkmark and so they can physically review what we've been practicing.
Excellent.
Can we combine these?
What'd you say, John? I'm sorry.
Can we combine both of these?
We're resolutions, so we need to do two separate motions.
John, any comments again on the Finance Committee side?
No, really, just memorializes our policies with respect to debt and cash management, et cetera. So nothing there. And again, we're pretty much reiterates what we discussed in the Budget Finance Committee meeting, which is an open, public meeting.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and take a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
Motion by John. Second by Cecilia. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion on the ordinance.
Motion to approve ordinance 101915G.
It was a resolution, not an ordinance. I apologize.
Okay. Says ordinance.
Where are we? 16. So we've got a motion by Todd.
Says ordinance, yeah.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Oscar, on to item 17.
Which you already talked about, I believe, haven't you, Oscar?
Well, item 17 is the city reserves. Again, it's the 50% of the next year's property taxes, along with, we just formalize a lot of the best practices that we will.
So I'll take a, I understand, Oscar, I apologize. I'll take a motion to suspend the rules, adopt that first reading.
So move.
Motion by Stuart.
Second by John.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed.
I have a, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Stuart, or second.
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed.
Thank you, Oscar.
And we kind of glossed over, sorry, Pete, but I, that 50%, that's something that is, as you have good times and then you have bad times, having that. In the bad times, you know when you plan during the good times. This is an exact method of doing that, and it's worked well for us. So by memorializing, I think that it's a good step for us. Not a good step, but just continuing.
Yes.
I think there, too, another point that Oscar made that I appreciate, you know, didn't have an appreciation for, because we used to do sort of either, you know, in past years, some council members went, and recently, in Scott's tenure with the town and city, you know, as budget owner, we've entertained the rating agencies. And so this gives them, as I think, you know, a documented, rather than it being an informal policy that council has had for many, many decades, as you said, this gives them an ability for raider, rating analysts in New York to sort of review the document, check the box, and say, yes, this fulfills all of the, you know, sort of our checklist of rating assessments. So it's excellent.
And that's correct. And this will actually allow us to get a higher rating on our management piece. So we get rated as a management. And having it formalized will give us a, hopefully, a better rating than we've had in the past that will hopefully lead to a higher.
With our RSP rating going up, again, better rates, more, more, more great rates and also better terms and conditions.
Right, so again, the importance of Standard and Poor's giving us the highest possible rating as we take out debt, any basis points that we can save over 20 years, it's actual significant amounts of money. So our office is trying to do the best to get the highest rating possible.
I mean, I just express appreciation for sort of a professional controllership here and seeing the benefits of this sort of, while we had it for years, here's just an ancillary incremental benefit of documenting what we've been doing and getting that benefit. So from a sort of a professional standards, thank you.
Oscar, appreciate what you're doing, Oscar. Yep.
If I may, just certainly, as Chair of the Budget Finance Committee, one thing I've been real impressed, wanting to commend you, Oscar, for your hard work and efforts at modernizing and continuing to improve the accounting function for the city. I really appreciate that. You know, when you do something like what you're going through, you're almost like you're trying to repair an airplane as it's flying. And that's exactly what you're doing, and you're doing an outstanding job. It's been really just incredible to watch you and your team do what they're doing[1717.56] It's been really just incredible to watch you and your team do what they're doing and be able to, you know, start as a city controller and be able to grow your team and also grow the capabilities of your organization. So I really appreciate everything you've done for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oscar. Moving on to item number 18.
Good evening, everyone. Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development, bringing before you a resolution approving a first amendment to the funding agreement. Funding agreement here is for the Jaeger/KFC/Edge development just over there on Lantern. The costs of doing landscaping, hardscaping were increased by about $85,000. That's more than what was originally intended and contemplated in the agreement when it was finalized about a year ago. So this is really just a resolution bringing to the council's attention that we're spending the money on this use for these hardscapes. It's very basic, an act of really transparency more than anything else, but would ask for your guys' approval of this amendment.
Any questions for staff?
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution R. 101915A.
Motion by Stuart. Second. Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Brandon. 19. Oscar's back.
Again, for the last time, for the record, Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. The ordinance that I have in front of you, and it is an ordinance, not a resolution, I apologize, for you is a request to deappropriate city general funds. As we get towards the end of the year, this is an action that has taken place by this body in previous years. Any unused funds that are appropriated, we deappropriate. And the amount that we're asking to have deappropriated is $8 million. The $8 million is already accounted on our projections for our cash reserve. So this is part of our cash reserves that has already been accounted for. So all we're doing is deappropriating this in order to put in, as a cash reserve for next year's budget.
Any questions for Oscar? All right, we do have a public hearing on this item, so I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing on R. 101915B, the deappropriation of city funds. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please come forward, state your name and address the record, please hear your comments as they relate to this resolution.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Colby. I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. And I just want to commend you for doing this. That's kind of a little shell game we have to play, you have to play, you know, waiting for that revenue to come in. And I'm glad to see that we're keeping track of it and we're putting money back in the cash reserve. That only helps the bond rating and, and other kind of rainy day issues.